9:00 AM, I'm calling this meeting to order. Please rise for an invocation by Commissioner Tony Haas. Hope by place of allegiance by Commissioner, please go please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of life. Thank you for the promise of grace. We pray for your intervention in these difficult times. Our finances here at the county personally, particularly been hit with. We pay for the strength to find our way out of these challenges. Give us the wisdom to know what to do. Guide and lead us in our everyday lives. Please keep our family and friends free from disease and harm. We, Heavenly, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Roll call, Mr. Duran County. Mr. Luis Lopez.
Here.
Mr. Haas.
Here.
Mr. Felix Lopez.
I am here. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda, Mr. Duran County?
No changes, Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I want to approve the agenda. Send a motion.
Mr. Luis Lopez.
Yes.
Mr. Haas.
Yes.
Mr. Felix Lopez.
Yes. We're going to go to section three, since we don't have any items on section two. Reading of correspondence, Commissioner community reports. Commissioner Tony Haas, would you like to go first?
Sure. On September 4th, CPTG had their quality assurance task force meeting to cover the House Bill 1379 dredging fill. That this meeting was focused primarily on the marker engagement and CDO mitigation primarily. The goal was to review wetland mitigation types assessment approaches and ratios. They provided current language for section 404 and the remaining requirements to state wetland mitigation options. Section 404 requires a permit before any material is discharged and moved waters can be discussed. Rule 87 was discussed, which is temporary authorization without affecting any priority water right or senior rights. On the 6th of September, I was the emcee for Colorado Counties Incorporated's Southern District Meeting. This meeting was well attended with 50 commissioners from the Southern District. We had several presentations. Dan Zimmer, Assistant Director for Gray Outdoors Colorado, gave a brief on the Colorado outdoor strategy. Tera Marshall with Dola talked about available programs and lack thereof due to funding shortages. Colorado congressional offices were well represented with briefs from Aaron Minx for Bennett's office, Antonio Ward to the Vic Lucre's office, and Captain Garcia with Mark Olber's office. Then our own Commissioner Luis Lopez made a report and insights of his participation as broadband member in the front range rail. CSU Extension made presentation and an update from Bruce Pickensher and the new VP of Engagement, James Pritchett. Then Commissioner Luis Lopez led the discussion of adding a TPR to the Mountain District and not combining Southern Mountain Resort TPR with the Southern District. If this were to happen, the Southern District would lose a voice on the TPR Transportation Committee, which determines project priority for the state. On the 12th of September, I was at the county health pool. I got re-elected as Vice Chair of the County Health Pool in the state. This was our annual renewal meeting. What we learned at this meeting probably that's going to affect us all, and I'm sure Christopher will talk about it later in our presentation, was a 9% increase to the pool effective for 2025. And it was agreed upon due to a higher utilization of members and increased cost due to inflation. During COVID, everything shook down. You couldn't go in for those minor surgeries, remember that? Well, then what this does, if everybody had to get all that done when it was available, so that happened last year, that's why we had the increase. Anthem was actually asking for 18% increase. And Meredith Urchard, our director at CTSI, did a pretty good job of negotiating down to the 9%. So we just increased, I think, up 2%, which she did a really, really good job. And there's one more. Due to high demand from all of our counties throughout the state, there would be a higher deductible plan for 2025, $5,000. And then at last, we discussed the budget. It is noted that there would be an $8 million decrease in our budget from 2024. So 72.1 million is what we had to work with last year. This year, we'll have 64.3. On the 13th of September, another water quality assurance commission meeting. And we met again. And the reason I participated in this is I was successful in getting two amendments on the 1379, which protected our ocean control ponds and our small mainstream pools under the drum rock that many of our renters use as a source of water for their livestock and even their households. And I'm good in attending all these meetings to make sure that they don't pull those amendments out as they're negotiating on the new rules or regulations. Three mitigation types were discussed, mitigation bank. This type of mitigation is low impact and is performed off-site in the same watershed for NTE's purchase credits from the bank. And the second one is INLU, L-I-E-U. This type involves free sponsors that are nonprofits or public agencies. Here, the sponsors pool mitigation payments and our ability is transfer to the pool. And number three, the permanent responsible mitigation applicants. They do their own mitigation in advance of any God. So in advance, they do the mitigation in advance. So they've already established the one hand somewhere else and they can transfer the water to there and meet the requirements. Action Colorado met, and I was elected Vice Chair again of Action 22. And they took positions on eight propositions and initiatives. And the winner annual was discussed at length and will be held on October 24th. And that's more important than this.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everybody. Good to see you here. On the September 5th, I was on a vote for the day. We had the State Transportation and Judiciary Committee meeting. And I also had Front Range Passenger Rail Finance. Brian Blasey with Council of Governors is our appointee for the STACK representative. I mean, ultimately, Mr. Blasey was able to obtain a peer from that meeting on behalf of Los Angeles Railroad Company. And giving some updates regarding that I-25 project is still moving forward with the Walsheim area of bridges overlaying and being put down now on the southern lands and coming to fruition as we see. A lot of other projects are coming out. The pavement is completed out of the KIM area, Route 116. So that is, projects are done and moving forward with the state transportation projects. In the Front Range Passenger Rail Finance meeting, we're trying to figure out how we're going to balance for 2026. Our 2025 budget will be presented now on October. What money's getting short, the Senate Bill 184 that was directed by the legislature to assist in transit is being looked at and evaluated very carefully and scrutinized every penny. I'm not optimistic that Front Range Rail is going to see any administrative dollars out of that legislature. Unfortunately, we're still in negotiations and talking with legislators and how that's going to be appropriated with them. So we're going to be trying to figure out other alternative ways for revenue until a ballot measure is passed for Front Range Rail in possibly 2026. An alternative would be going to the DOM 2025, which I oppose. Off-year ballot measures are never successful, in my opinion, in looking at the history or the research. Any tax measures done in and off-year election, not being presidential or a midterm, have all failed in the past 25 years. So a lot of research has been done. We've been putting in a ballot around the state and seeing what has passed over the years and see what puts our next option to promote and present to my Front Range Rail board members that are upcoming in late now September and are intrigued and on the board. So we'll just have to figure out how we can move forward. Maybe a legislative bill dedicated to Front Range Rail alone for administrative costs to continue moving forward in the pattern. To have the success of a rail conference for a reason. The negotiations are still in effect with the northern portion of the rail with transportation and the RTP CDO regarding the northern section of the rail and the government for aunt and see what that board of the RTP is going to come up with. If they want to figure out how we're going to cost share, allocate authority, and follow with that section of the rail. On the 6th, I was in Rocky Ford, loving going out there and seeing the beautiful building they have for the 4-H group and Extension, CEO Extension Office. It's a really nice facility out there. It's great to be there. And I will form a meeting with Commissioner Haas. Mentioned, but I did do the updates to the rail before the vote and also the STACK and the transportation planning region, which will segue into my next meeting, which was on the 11th. I did meet with Herman Stockinger. Herman Stockinger is number two, is trying to do for our transportation CDO. We had a luncheon and a good visitation on Front Range Rail, which is a newly appointed board member. And it'd be great to have his knowledge of transportation of 25 years of CDO on that board and also advocate for rail as well for transportation in the future. But my main concern was with discussion with him regarding the transportation planning region and our bill that we are presenting for the merger not to occur. So for those of you that don't have been called up with this, the state passed a bill a couple of years ago, giving CDO the authority to do a study to see what appropriations for the transportation planning region or mergers or what it should look like on the districts and map. And at that time, their recommendation was to merge Southern Colorado, which is working on Los Angeles County, with our eastern counties, South Central. Southeastern counties are going to be, we opposed that. If we don't want to lose our voice at the State Transportation Committee. Instead of working on Los Angeles County competing for the dollar allocated for the region, we'd have any other counties who could compete for revenues for that. We, as a board here, have opposed that. And we decided to move forward with presenting a bill to add a voice to the transportation planning region and add our voices to the STACK. So in that conversation, it was not a vote by Mr. Stockinger, but a possibility of adding an NPE, which is a municipal party. Adding a voice for them, and I didn't oppose that at all. I said, what a great idea. Well, we just move forward with that. So we'll see what this does. I did talk to Representative Winter. And will we contact, or will they contact soon the bills lobbyists regarding how we're going to draft that and possibly do that? And I'll be discussing it with the other community counties. If they would oppose that as well, but I think that would be a win-win for everybody. Instead of losing the voice for the transportation planning regions and for the municipalities so they have an extra voice in that. But what actually, in my opinion, is fair for one, fair for all, instead of taking away this hat. And if we can do that through legislation. So it was a very successful meeting. Mr. Stockinger, unknown for eight years, but I've never had a chance to visit with him. And it gets known he's a really down-to-earth person and a dedicated CDO supporter. So look forward to seeing that come to fruition. On the 12th, we had Trevor with Renewal Authority met. And we are also going over our budget for the year. We are glad to see that the TIF funding, tax increment funding has been raised up. Jody Mott, County Sustained, thank you for that information you presented and then gave to the board to the 28,000 dollars in revenue versus the 24,000 in priority. So we're seeing an increase in revenue through the tax improvement funding, which is a step forward in applying with a grant that we just received for hopefully hiring an executive director or part-time executive director to assist in renewing the oil projects. There's some projects that are worth right now with the Toyota dealership, the New Ford dealership. They suspended it for three years. Well, they got a three-year extension. Hopefully, they'll move forward the next year getting that dealership built. The huge number building as well is in the process of renovations. That's another project that we're going to assist with. And now the opera house is on the bullseye. Dana Crawford and Trevor Renewal are coming to an agreement with Five Star Bank here in Trinidad for secure funds, $140,000 to start renovation projects and securing the building from falling down in the roof and protecting the folks transiting on Main Street and getting that sidewalk open as much as possible and protecting people from that. And the next stage that will follow with the appropriations and funding for $12 million, the renovation of the lot. So we'd love to see that come to fruition, but this is the first step. So we have also, in that, advocating for the private sector secured that. So the private sector will be securing the loan. They will receive the interest. And we will be providing the collateral of $140,000 CD and we'll still be making more interest here. So it's a win-win for everybody. So it was really good work for Chairman Drago and Mr. Pat Howlett in their discussions we're going on with that organization and moving forward with that. And I'm glad to see that we're not a bad impact sector. I hate to see government pay and take funds away from the local community. And then also, we had local terror partners incorporated yesterday. And there was a loan up on the books for that for $50,000 for a small pressure that has been business for directly 27 years. There was a lot of heavy questions on that scrutinizing, the availability to repay it. And so the breakdown was actually, came out in favor of the applicant. I know our finance review committee opposed it. But after the numbers were given to the board, the board decided to approve it, thinking that it would be a tight way to get through this, but they think it would be successful because of the longevity of the establishment. And so that the board approved it, $2,000 for apparel partners incorporated for the competition in Colorado. So that position will remain open and can move forward about a few years to come. And then I had a conversation with Mrs. Gonzalez, Department of Health. We will be set up a work session with the working county commissioners. Soon, a project is kind of being delayed now with the property not being available for the new building structure that we've been working on for the last year and a half. So the search is on for another location, which is at H. Town Hall. But we have to get approval from the city council and working county commissioners for it. So that'll be good. And that's my report, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. For those of you that are joining us this morning, I want to just let you know that this group of county commissioners, we get the moment at state, local, state, and national opportunities on behalf of this county and on behalf of Colorado counties. So what you have heard is simply a kind of a representative perspective of what is it that we do. So on my report, I'm going to be providing a couple of, I'm the chairman of the Southeast Colorado opioid dollars. On this particular board, we have nine member counties. And one of the meetings that we had last week, basically, we're going to start awarding RFPs for year two. This is an 18-year allocation that came through the Attorney General's office and money that was secured through a lawsuit from the pharmaceutical agencies. And as other pharmaceutical representatives and manufacturers come on to light, the litigation continues on. And so that's money that's coming directly to counties. And one of the things that we do have is we take very little of that money for administrative costs. We do have to have a finance person and that's someone that keeps track of all of that. But the majority of those funds are making their way onto and through entities that provide the services for those individuals and families that are impacted by opioid. But one of the challenges that we're having right now is identifying companies that would provide services for the nine counties at once. So we're having to award RFPs for a company that perhaps, an operator that will provide services to Los Angeles, working on perhaps Otero counties. But then we have to find somebody else to provide for Baca, Brower's, and other counties within, and then Pueblo. So this is a pretty challenging distribution. But yet I can tell you that also I'm part of the RFP search and evaluation committee. And when we do that, we spend hours on that and communicating and conversating, who should we award these hours to? What kind of an impact? And then we are having them come back, the operators of these funds from year one, come back and actually give us an update of what have they accomplished? What, how many people are being impacted in a positive way? And what are some of the opportunities for year two and year three? We are going to be considering now going into year two, perhaps making an award for two consecutive years. We don't want to have them come back every single year, however, simply under the scrutiny of, did you meet the projected outcomes that you put in place for year one? And if so, if not, what are you planning to do for year two? So that is a very interesting perspective that's going on. And so excited to be part of that particular group. We're going to be meeting here in the next few days to review five or six proposals, and they're very lengthy. We've been working at it. So we'll spend a few hours going through the process and identifying what some of the services that, of course, each and every one of us is a little bit biased because we want all the money and all the services to come to our counties. But we've got to find that sweet spot where we're able to partner and collaborate. Another meeting that we had last Friday with the Colorado Department of Ag, one of the conversations that we have had is what's going on with the HBI, the cattle industry flu that has circulated. And we were told directly by the director of that agency that it is pretty much under control. So far, there hasn't been any advancement on it. There has been a lot of investigation in Colorado. At one point in time, seemed to be the epicenter of these cases. But it's all under control. Through the regulation that Colorado has in place, there has been sufficient follow-through and activity to prevent this type of high avian flu to continue to affect us. And one of the challenges that they saw that apparently some of the farm cats that were going in there actually were getting impacted. And they had a couple of human cases that they followed, but there were no threatening symptoms according to, according to what the secretary actually said to us. But if you hear of anything within our county, please be sure to reach out to our public help. They are the ones that would be the agency to collect this data and follow through and then work with CDA and so on. The, one of the, I want just kind of an honorable mention of this particular item. I believe about a year ago, this board of county commissioners sent a resolution to our federal delegation opposing the 30x30, or America the Beautiful. And what that really is, by 2030, the federal government is attempting to own 30% of all the land that the United States has. So we sent a resolution to them opposing that. And I can honestly tell you that a resolution made it to the federal government. There is a map where counties that are opposed to this particular expansion and land grab through whether it's eminent domain and whatever means the federal government sees. Los Angeles County, when you go to 30x30, America the Beautiful, you'll see Los Angeles County is one of the counties standing in opposition for no more land grab. So congratulations to this board. Our letters sometimes will touch resolutions, and we don't think those documents are going to make it any waves, but definitely this is one. And just a very small footnote, as I represent Colorado at the national level on the National Association of Counties, that became a big conversation as well. We, from the NAPO Association, made an invitation to member counties through this entity to send levers to the federal government, no more land grab. One of the other things that we're keeping an eye on is how many foreign assets are really acquiring some of the prestige front rent here in the United States, although that's private property rights, government will never interfere with that. But we also want to know exactly what is happening with that kind of a thing. So we're keeping an eye on that as well. We'll bring a couple more items. The, this is more of a not, as you get your ballots in, studying, read it. There's going to be, it's not the job of any of this board to actually educate or persuade people how to vote, but please read it because there's going to be some ballot initiatives in there that could possibly be infringing upon our constitutional rights. And when I say our constitutional rights, be careful, read it, read the pro con. And in many instances, do a little more research because some of them can actually be, in the sense of interfering with elections and so on. It could happen. There's a lot of language that's going to be coming in here that could be cautiously, needs to be cautiously navigated. So basically on that, there's a lot of work that we need to do. And then, of course, you know, one of the most important things is the decisions that are made at the state level impact everyone in the counties. So we are so honored to be part of Colorado Counties Incorporated because one of the things that we have through that entity and organization, we all come together, by the way, this Friday, I believe, is the first meeting, the legislative meeting that we're going to be coming together at 60-some counties and taking position on some of the bills that are going to be introduced. And Los Angeles County, Commissioner Chris Lopez, were introducing a piece of legislation sponsored by him and then, of course, supported by others through the House and the Senate. And so a big impact that could happen. And so through CCI, we have an opportunity to create the network and get the support behind what we need to do. So if anyone wants to give us an rest, all you can do is, and I believe we have as the legislative session begins through Los Angeles County, under Commissioner reports, you might be able to click on bills impacting counties. And just as a reminder, in the last few fiscal years and legislative years, the legislature will see upwards of 600 bills per session. Think about that, 600 bills. How many of those are really going to be impacting counties? There is a good chance that a good majority. So, and that's going to be my report. And I thank you for indulging us in this particular section. So now I'm going to move on to election officials update. And since we have one of our very own in the room, I don't know if I, Los Angeles County assessor, Mr. Jory Amato, would have an update for us.
Good morning, everyone. We are still waiting, as assessors, to get a final draft of the bill that was signed under special session. We are starting to see some tricklings come through, some spreadsheets and such, of what we need to start implementing for Senate Bill 24101 so we can get that out the door. As it stands right now, and as we've discussed, as assessors and as Department of Taxation, it looks like the tax bills for 2024 will not be impacted by anything that came out of the special session, so those should be good to go. We will be hopefully finalizing and getting values and getting certifications out to everyone, normally like we do in December. So at this time, that's all I have. I will keep everybody informed as the information comes to my desk.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheriff, there, remember that, I know you have a couple of items that you wanted to mention, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, I have a couple of contracts that will be coming up in the agenda for some housing with the City of Trinidad and also for some additional funding that we received from the state for our MAP program in the jail, which is the Medicaid assisted treatment program. So we'll be discussing that in a little bit. But I've got about $10,000 more for the MAP program, so that will definitely help. So that's about all I have for today.
Thank you, sir. I will be talking to you here shortly. Let me call on anyone from the clerk's office. Anyone from the treasurer's office. District Attorney. And for anyone from the coroner's office. Here and now, we're going to go to section five. This section is going to be for presentations. And we have a couple of presentations. Let me just remind the presenters, we have, I called your name to this podium, that to keep your presentation relevant to the theme and the subject that you are to address with this county. And it is appropriate, as the board of county commissioners, at any point in time, to bring the conversation to remain back to that particular theme. So if, as we go through the process... So if, as we go through the process, we will be able to ask questions of the presenters. However, we don't intend to make a decision in this particular segment of the meeting. So let me call on broadband discussion with SCAD and SECOM representatives. Leslie, good morning, and I think we have John online.
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, John.
Morning.
Morning.
So to those of you, John, and to remind y'all, Leslie Mastriani, the executive director of the Southern Colorado Economic Development District, or SCAD. And we've been involved in broadband for, well, since before I started, but, so I've learned a lot in the last three years. I know more about broadband than I ever thought I would. We, as you know, as another reminder, we applied for Apple Projects Funds from Colorado Broadband Office in Los Angeles County, who's awarded, or we were awarded a project in Los Angeles County on Highway 12 earlier this year. We turned right around, knowing that there was $826 million available in Colorado for broadband through the B program. We turned right around and said, okay, now Colorado will be around all of that money for our region. That's probably an unrealistic expectation, but we did receive, I think it's either 13 or 13% of the state's CPF allocation for our region. So that was, that was another path. So we send out, as we did with CPF, we have SCAD put out an RFP looking for partners who could work with us in identifying projects in our region. We did that earlier, probably right this summer, and SECOM responded to our proposal. And as we are, Highway 12 project, I'll partner them in identifying some projects. Application portal is open. End of the last week, it opened now. Applications are due to be in October. So at one time, we had 25 projects, potential projects identified in our 13 county region, and there were several in Los Angeles County. John knows that I turned very, very pale and started to agree heavy when he said 25 projects, and like, okay, you knew it. Well, thankfully, we've narrowed it down here. And I am going to turn it over to John, because he was much smarter when it comes to broadband than I am. We handle, SCAD is the applicant, the recipient of the funds. We manage just kind of high-level reporting, financial management of the state, whereas SECOM is our technical highest we can hire, who has really been heavily loved when it comes to getting broadband from each county. So, John, it's all yours.
All right, well, thank you, Leslie. So can you, are you okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So we've identified three different areas in Los, Los Angeles County that we're looking at applying for. So one of them is the Santa Fe Trail Ranch area, so west of I-25 and south of Trinidad. Another one is along Highway 12, and this one would really complement the CPF grant that SCAD and SECOM were awarded a few months ago. It fills in some blanks around there, as well as includes Copeville. And the third project is Aguilar. That was getting to be a little bit challenging to do. I will say that SECOM is currently building out fiber of the home in about half of Aguilar. We're doing that on our own, just upgrading the system. We looked and we did make a decision, we need to upgrade, get those people better bandwidth there. There was two ways we can do it. We could put in some high-quality wireless equipment that exists, and there is some fiber of the home with a lot of wireless there. Or we could just do fiber of the home to the whole community, or a portion of the community. So we had it in our budget to do some fiber of the home projects. So Aguilar is one we selected. We're doing approximately half of the town. We'll have that done probably in the next four to six months or less, and have half of that town done. Again, we'll look forward to do something with them later. One of the things that we're looking at, it is eligible under the grant. The way the state selects areas, we don't get to select the areas in a granular manner. They do it by census tract and block, and what they do, they take and group together, they group the census tracts and blocks. I, I don't know how they go about that process. The challenge is, let's say Copeville is just the town of Copeville. When we look at Aguilar, it's the town of Aguilar, and then they have all these areas that go clear down on I-25, down the lead low, and they actually have a leg of it that goes just north of Boncarbo, it's about halfway between Gull Merritt and Boncarbo, some fairly remote areas. And the problem is, we, that whoever would win that, if they were to win that, has to service every location that they identify there, or be capable of it. And the challenge is, some of the mapping has some, it has some challenges with it. The feds, they use the feds map from the FCC, and it uses computer, it uses a computer basically to take the satellite imagery and determine what's a location or not. So it runs into a lot of challenges out there with a lot of wells, and those are a house, which they really aren't. We get out in other areas, you'll see haystacks that are identified as a house, or a grain bin, or there may be one house that has a barn and a garage and a grain bin. So they'll have four locations there, which again, if there's a house there, it's not a problem, but their, their mapping, it's better than it used to be, but it still has some room for improvement. The challenge that we have with the Aguilar area is the area is so wide and encompassing, and the largest portion of those are wells out there, a large portion, and they're not actually houses. So again, we're exploring that and how we may work, work to get something done there. We've got some options, and what we'll apply for there. Again, Santa Fe Trail Ranch, we're looking at that one, Highway 12, pretty much from Copeville going west. I remember the farthest west in the, it at least goes as far, if not a little bit farther, than our existing CPF grant in Aguilar. So with that, I know that's a lot, that's a lot there. Turn it over for any questions you have on that.
Thank you, John. Leslie, good to see you. It was nice to have a conversation with you last day, and we could go over some discussing a little bit more regarding what just happened after our great presentation from Lisa. So, John, my question wasn't able to be answered by Lisa at the time, which she didn't do the presentation. What is SECOM's position? The presentation that we received was a request for, I think, $36,000 or $4,000, I can't remember who's agreeing, minimum amount, to assist with the grant. If Los Angeles County is unavailable at this time to assist with that financial obligation, is SECOM's position still to move forward with the implementation of broadband in the community that you just presented?
You know, we're looking at those, and our goal is to get broadband to those areas. So whatever shape that's going to take, you know, again, we want to apply to those areas and do something. You know, from a strategic standpoint, from a business perspective, SECOM serves a number of those areas already with wireless. So we want to upgrade those areas and make sure they have good service. So again, we, we want to get those people served, and so we're open to discussions on what that may look like to get them served there, open to options.
The reason why I ask is to be transparent with my board here of the next steps regarding assisting our community with this valuable service, but also giving the board an option, and our staff here, and our administration staff, of seeing the alternative of being a full member, a paying member of SCAD, which Leslie was talking about, and will the benefits come with that membership of the $3600. So just something for us to digest, and that question couldn't have been answered without you here today, John, so thank you for that.
Sure.
But I agree with the move that Los Angeles County to evaluate the membership with SCAD versus just a monetary assistance on a grant, but I think the services would possibly, after thoroughly vetted and evaluated, benefit us as a whole, if the funds are awarded.
Sure. Just add to that, I will say that SCAD has engaged the company Ditesco, an engineering firm. We worked with them on the CPF grants, and I don't think we would have gotten those grants if SECOM would have tried to do that on their own. The expertise they brought to this in grant writing and getting all the engineering pieces done in such a short timeframe were, again, I can't explain how valuable that was, to have those guys working on that project. Again, I don't think we would have gotten the near the grants awards if we hadn't had the assistance of Ditesco, which is through the SCAD.
One last question, and I think I know the answer to this. In the billing for your folks that are now receiving your services, is there in fact, if I remember correctly, the county one and a half state sales tax attached to those billing for services and goods on the monthly bill? I just want to see if there's a benefit to the community by expanding more services and more customers for our tax base as well.
Sure, great question. So I think, my part's by federal definition, internet is not taxable. There are certain services, so if they have a voice service or a phone service, those are taxable service, so it benefits from that. The other piece is then, with fiber infrastructure, that has a property tax valuation. Now, if those aren't, the assessor doesn't do that, those are state assessed, but that does bring the benefit to the county overall with, with revenue and property tax, increased property tax valuation.
Thank you, sir. John, you and I, when, the last time you were here, one of the conversations, one of the questions that we had, how is the state of Colorado when it comes to state-owned property, working with for right of ways, working with your company and SCAD for right of ways, because that seems to always be one of the obstacles that you have to overcome?
Again, this is another timely question. There is a challenge with CDOT right now in their current, what they have available, it's three cents per foot per year. There's another option that really isn't even viable in the timeframe. They have two options for us to get right of way. One is through this partnership process, for lack of a better term. It can take two to five years to get that process done, so it basically is not available for the grant for all practical purposes. The other way is to pay a five cent upfront fee per foot per year, or for the first year in the application, and then three cents per foot per year going on after that. So I will say, that has hampered SECOM from looking at building from Kim to Branson to Trinidad. I, you know, I've given you the numbers before, and then I'll have to go back and look, but, I mean, it's in the teens of dollars per month that we would have to charge each one of those residents just to cover the CDOT cost, because it's round numbers, 90 miles of construction, and there's just not that many people out there.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Oh, that was, you know, you want to push buttons? John just got his quote.
I get very passionate about this topic.
Mr. Orin, do you have a comment or a question, sir?
Yeah, a couple of questions. John, that decent Highway 12 that you're talking about, that SECOM or SCAD may seek footing for in this round of B grant opportunities, is that the piece that you mentioned with the barriers on your original application, not being able to service that area, or so not, as soon as SECOM was overcome from a service statement against that, or even was?
Yes, that has been overcome. So that was getting, San Isidro getting their line upgraded along the state parks there. That's been taken care of. The line is actually in now, and SECOM partnered with San Isidro, and we're actually doing the splicing on that fiber. This type of fiber is a little bit unique. It actually is in a metal casing on a transmission line. It sits in a metal case that sits up in the top of what they call the statics. They don't, it's not current carrying, but they're static, ground wires, for lack of a better term, they call them statics. But that's where the fiber is actually housed. So there was explicitly one put in at a strategic location so that Copeville could be added, and this adds capacity to that whole area, getting, you know, from Segundo Primero and, and the western areas. Right now, it's being serviced by a really high-capacity wireless link. Now, we're in the process, for the next six months, we'll get that migrated over 100% on fiber from Trinidad, as well as the fiber distribution that's being built out in the B application. So long and long-winded answer that yes, that, that challenge has been overcome, that we'll be able to do all of those now.
And then, or, you know, in Santa Fe Trail, I understand is that B grants cover, I don't know if it's called the first mile or second mile, whatever it's called, but anyway, O2, where Tommy is available to the residents, and then is SECOM going to incur the cost to go from where the B grant construction leaves off to those residents, or how does that go forward?
Well, the, the way that B works, it'll actually be the, the final mile connection. So basically, from our central office in, that sits in Aguilar, they will pay everything to get to the customer, including, they will pay for the equipment to connect up with that customer, the, the equipment and the labor. So if people, whether they want it or not, if they do it right now, it's, you know, it's a free installation for them to have it sitting there and ready to go.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Sanders, thank you for addressing the Kim Branson area, but, so you've identified some of the challenges, are, are there going to be any, do you think there'll be future possibilities?
Yes, I, I think there's going to be some options. Again, this is John, John's opinion, not SECOM's or anybody else's. The way this grant works is if nobody applies for an area, the way it is written, the state can, on a non-competitive basis, approach somebody to go out there and actually build it. So they can approach a SECOM, or a ZAM, or a Mavrix, or whomever, they can approach a provider and say, what is it going to take to get this done? In the event that we are able to get a change from CDOT, or a waiver, or variance, or something like that, either through the NTIA, which that's the federal agency that is providing this money, or through legislation, or CDOT Transportation Commission making a change or waiver. If that could happen relatively soon, it may be viable to get it under this B program to get, to get those areas out there connected up. Now, there are some of those areas that are covered by ZAM. I may, I apologize if I've explained this before. So there was, the FCC had a program several years ago, they had it, basically, it's the lowest bidder, it's a reverse auction, down to the lowest bidder, who will do it for the lowest. They got a large portion of south, of eastern Colorado, basically from I-25 to the state line, and they did several states they did this in, they're based out of Texas. To date, they have not started any destruction. They have till the end of 2025 to get 40% of Colorado in Africa completed. Last we knew, they had not started anything in Colorado. So we're questioning whether they're going to be able to do it. The challenge it creates, those areas that they were awarded, those census tracts and blocks, are prevented from being eligible for this B money. So again, there are some areas out there that we would, we'd be open to, let's build this out and do this, and, you know, including Branson. There are parts of Branson that weren't covered under the R office section, so the census tracts and blocks get pretty small in some, in a community. So again, that is a long-winded answer, yes, there is an option going forward. So again, that is a long-winded answer, yes, there is an option going forward here. If we get relief from CDOT and potentially something from Ardo, that one's less, I'm less concerned about that one, I'm more concerned about getting some relief from CDOT that we could, in the short term here. That way, it can make a project feasible then to do something like that.
Thank you.
That's my buddy. Lisa, thanks, John.
Well, we want to thank both of you, and let us definitely, this board will be convenient following up the discussion in terms of what our position will go forward. So we'll keep you abreast of any information on that.
We will, John.
Oh, I just one last comment. If you guys would be open to it, if you could just send a letter and I can get Mr. Doran Cam the email address, Colorado's representative from NTIA, she's actually based out of Denver, she used to work in the broadband office, so she's very familiar with broadband and so forth. Let her know that this is a challenge, it's been raised to the NTIA that this is a challenge with CDOT right now. Something coming from the county commissioners saying, hey, nobody wants to apply for this area, we just heard from a provider, we really want to get this area served, that would probably carry a lot of weight, more than just, you know, CECOM and other providers saying something. If you guys would be open to that, I would encourage you to do that, I'd be glad to get the email address to Mr. Doran Cam to let her know.
Please follow up with that, John, and I had a conversation with the Attorney General's Office, and then of course encouraging to work with the agencies, state agencies to work with counties, and then of course to have, because this is basically, we are, if you will, working hand in hand with the state, to work with us to get some of all that bureaucracy from out of the way, and then consider the fee, because that's also, counties are then in a position to provide and cover all the expense. But that's conversation, looking forward to a continued communication, thank you for working with us here.
And we'll follow up, I will follow up, as well as our broadband coordinator, Richard Chambers, will follow up, we'll, we'll let you know what projects we do and what you're serving, so stay in touch.
Is there a timeframe before you guys go on that grant of the revenues needed before this time, will be up in months?
Well, so we prefer CECOM to give me some.
I think she may have sent those numbers over late last night.
She did, I got them this morning.
Okay, yeah, so we've got our budgetary numbers. We're doing this in-house with our internal engineers, because we'd like to have things built a certain way that we know is going to work. So we're probably going to, those guys have been working a lot of hard work here, in fact, I would have loved to have been here today in person. I'm actually working on the financial spreadsheet model for our board meeting tomorrow and Thursday, so we can present the projects to them, you know, and get a thumbs up or whatever, on which ones they want to continue to pursue.
I should have final everything, John, there's a lot of witnesses here by Friday afternoon, maybe Monday at the end of last night.
As soon as you can get us that information, because we are in budget season right now as well, and we evaluate everything before.
Sure.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next person that we have on the presentations, Mr. Sheehorn.
All right, this is about the model cities. It's a bit mass, mass, not understanding what's going on. Have a deed, and I was going to ask why the Treasury Department would give a deed to the treasurer, or to the commissioners? So have an answer.
Say that again.
Why would the treasury give a deed to property to the commissioners?
I don't understand the question, how long ago, when was this recently?
Nineteen sixty-six.
I wasn't even around at that time. That's a great question.
Yeah, this is, but my understanding is, is to vacate the land, doesn't exist. So therefore, all cities were supposed to be vacated in sixty-six. So then, next thing come up, got from the county commissioners, and then seventy-one, a sale of this property. And then, some other properties, with all of the other properties have been vacated or been away, it doesn't exist. Double assessment, here it is, one hundred percent.
So the seller of the property that you are having a question, happened in nineteen seventy-one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so your question for us today, Mr. Sheehorn, is what?
The county commissioners put it back as a sale on the tax rule. And I'm saying it shouldn't have been on the tax rule. And it was just vacated, just recently, from the assessor's office. So with big taxes, all this done, now it's asking for a refund because that wasn't a
For me personally, it's going to take a few, we're going to have to do some research on that, so I just, not having, if you will.
But go ahead and continue with the presentation.
Okay, anyway, the present time now, Treasury kept billing up until twenty-one. With the taxes. And then, got a thing here that was deleted, the account was deleted in three thirty-twenty-two. But then, on the top, it says that I own the lots, but they're sleeping.
We haven't.
Well, it doesn't actually say sleeping. So that's reasonable. I'm thinking that the county brought any money, who left that taxes, who was paying for something that should have been vacated years ago?
If I can get my head around this, basically, years ago, you bought some properties that were on the tax sale, that unpaid taxes, and that's how you acquired the deeds, is that, was it a tax sale? Because if they came to the sheriff's office, they went to the treasurer, and then sold at auction, right? Is that how that was acquired?
Commissioners found a sucker to pay the taxes, so they sold it good for a dollar.
On that, at a tax sale?
No.
So it just sold property, okay, just like, so when any, in my years of doing business buying property, I've always had the title insurance to make sure the property is valid in the area. Did that, has that ever been occurred at that time or since then? Title insurance? Yeah, so that's there to protect me or you in purchasing property, to make sure that the surveyor and title company investigates it to make sure it's valid. And that's what I do when I buy.
But back in seventy-one, there wasn't all the cars like we got nowadays, and you'd get around and do this and that and the other, trusted the commissioners, trusted the public
So the acquisition of the property, you're saying, Mr. Sheehorn, happened in nineteen sixty-six by your father?
No, seventy-one.
On seventy-one. And on seventy-one, the, as Commissioner Luis Lopez is asking, in seventy-one, I personally, as county commissioner, have no authority, zero authority, as I stand alone here, to sell any piece of property that I might have access to. I, it has to go to, basically, the proper, we have statute, and we have constitutional language that we have to adhere to, so is that property recorded in nineteen seventy-one? Was it recorded on your dad's name? And for me right now, Mr. Sheehorn, two things that we're going to have to do as the board of county commissioners, thank you for bringing this to us, but there is going to be a little research, and we have to adhere to, one is statute. What is statute telling us that is basically, that's going to protect you, but also is going to give, what are the next steps for us and from us back to you?
Let us go right on here, the seller, county board. Okay, that's.
Well, thank you, no, thank you so much, and definitely, we are going to be, we will delve into and do some research, we have, we're going to basically look through our assessor's records, we're going to have to go through the Treasury's records, but I can assure you, right now, the authority to any one of the elected officials within the county that's not provide that authority to sell county property, you and I making a deal, I could model, I would never do that regardless, but we don't have authority to do that, so give us a, give us a little bit of time, Mr. Sheehorn, I thank for being here today, we hear your concerns about nineteen sixty-six, we've got to see what the law tells us, so we're going to be probably leaning heavy on our legal counsel, and definitely we'll have a resolution back to you, sir. Thank you so much, all right, appreciate that. We're going to go to the next session, we have public comments, public comment, let me remind our presenters, and sincerely, we're running a festival with a lot of good information this morning, Jennifer Lay and Pastor Clay Mason, we will give, if both of you would like three minutes each, or you can do three minutes together?
I'm going to try to get it done for three minutes.
Okay, so we'll go, since the two of you signed up basically individually, three minutes to each one of you, so Mr. Trump will put the time, and so, good morning, welcome, and please, thank you for being here this morning.
Good morning, commissioners, good morning, everyone. My name is Jennifer Lay, I work at the police department, and next to me is Pastor Clay Mason. We are a part of the Coalition for the Unhoused here in Los Angeles and Maricano County, and I just wanted to provide you one quick update. So the Coalition for the Unhoused is excited to announce its award of a two-year grant from the Community Solutions International. This vital funding will support the establishment of a systems coordinator position dedicated to addressing homelessness across Los Angeles and Maricano Counties. As both counties face challenges related to homelessness, the need for a coordinated effort has never been more urgent. The systems coordinator will lead a comprehensive strategy to reduce homelessness by streamlining resources, enhancing collaboration amongst local stakeholders, and implementing evidence-based solutions. The systems coordinator will be a crucial, the systems coordinator position will be a crucial in uniting local governments, nonprofit healthcare providers, and community members to build a shared vision for reducing homelessness in Southern Colorado. This position will focus on expanding access to affordable housing, enhancing supportive services, and leveraging data-driven initiatives for long-term solutions. The Coalition for the Unhoused is committed to addressing homelessness in Southern Colorado through collaboration, partnerships, and evidence-based strategies by bringing together local organizations, government agencies, and community members. The Coalition is working towards sustainable solutions for individuals and families experiencing homelessness, securing this grant marks a pivotal step in turning that mission into reality. The funding provided through the Build for Zero case investment will enable the Coalition to begin recruiting a systems coordinator position within the coming days. We're going to be posting this job position hopefully by the end of this week, but it's not the beginning of next week, and that'll be through Keep Trinidad Safe. So I know you guys are not allowed to pull a comment or comment to me, but we just wanted to give you an update, and if there's anything else, I still have time.
You said it all, we are working hard, very hard. We've got a wonderful group, we had a meeting last night, the camaraderie that's in our group, we're going to solve this, sooner or later, sooner than later, we're going to solve this, but it is an ongoing problem, and I just can't set our prices, I feel what's going on. I say our places, her places, it's just that wonderful thing, and I see we're going places.
Thank you for the time this morning.
Thank you. We were not a lot of question, but would you please send us the date for the next culture day, it was on the twentieth, when they will be there, of August, for the next culture day.
We, I sent out an email to the large group, our next meeting. It is going to be November fourteenth, at Space to Create Atmosphere, and there'll also be a Zoom link that we sent out, the Valves of State Continue Care is also going to be assisting our coalition with some of the day-to-day work as far as agendas and making meeting minutes, and some of the other things that I've been doing, so that's going to be a huge help to us as well.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Thank you so much for this time this morning.
Mr. Bill Phillips.
And Luke Doggs.
And Luke Doggs, and again, since you signed individually, each one of you will get three minutes, or you want to get three minutes together?
Three minutes, fine.
Very good. Good morning and welcome, sir.
Good morning, county commissioners, county staff, citizens of Los Angeles County. Luke and I are here today to just give you some updates on Fort Worth. As you know, the Los Angeles County Veterans Council, which we are both part of, and we manage FOW, and we agreed to do some status, actually, some status and a letter that's requesting a letter of support that we are seeking to fund anything that's real stuff. So I have ten copies of the letter, and also some sample letters as we go through this. Just as some background, obviously, the Los Angeles County Veterans Council has one coronary charter, and that is to rehabilitate four wounds in safe sanitary comfortable use of veterans and community of Los Angeles County, and that is our charter. And since taking possession, I should thank this esteemed board again for what they did for us back in two thousand and eighteen, because we at that point took possession of Fort Worth, and we then changed our charter from getting support to rehabilitation. And we've been pretty diligently since June of two thousand and eighteen, with the exception of that one. We tried a number of things that didn't, didn't work, but one of the things we did in two thousand and twenty is we did a historic structure assessment from the state historic fund, and that was to go through Fort Worth and make sure that we understood the age of the facility being nineteen thirty-six and nineteen thirty-seven, what was required in order to make sure that we could continue to make this facility available to the community and veterans. And we got together with the state historic fund, and we actually put in fifteen thousand thousand dollars, uh, and we contracted with a, uh, virtual for a mandatory structure, so that was done in two thousand and twenty. And, uh, the results of that were, uh, probably not unexpected, but, uh, the cost associated with rehabilitated, rehabilitated before at that time was about a million two. Uh, since then, obviously, we've got thirty-four second leases and leases, and it continues to go. Uh, we had, uh, intended after the historic structure assessment to move forward with the next, uh, funding, which we're doing as a competitive grant, twenty thousand dollars.
Oh, what do you want to say? We have three minutes for you.
Oh, yes, uh, if you wanna continue the conversation now. Okay. Uh, so that's three minutes, okay, I got you. Uh, so just, in, in March of this year, on our April fourth, we applied for another, uh, grant for the State Historic Fund for construction maintenance, to pursue the first step phase of the project, which is to get hollow by hollow what we think is the most important aspect of the community equipment, and to get hollow by hollow, we rehabilitated it first. That's, the first phase of this project is to structurally get the buildings, so it's gonna stay standing, make sure the roof is, the roof is there, and the drainage is there. So that, that, that grant was awarded to us in April, uh, we are on the way to getting those construction maintenance right now. The next phase of this project is to execute construction maintenance, and that's a great number of money for our own infrastructure. So that's what the letters of work is, is all about, the work, the question we're coming to support, so that, uh, we're gonna use our own funds as matching funds, we're gonna build about seventeen thousand dollars into the construction funds, and offer another fifteen-plus thousand dollars in the first phase of, of the actual construction maintenance.
We'd be very pleased to get your support, uh, as we, as we move forward, um, but just as a, as a reminder, when we, when we first, uh, we came home as such of the fort back in two thousand and eighteen, we started to wonder whether we'd sort of, uh, really wanted what we'd asked for. Uh, we, we sold ourselves the owners of thirty-one thousand square feet of real estate, and in our bank, we had two thousand dollars. Um, obviously, that wasn't an awash, and, uh, since, since then, uh, we made considerable progress, particularly in the, uh, benefits to veterans that have happened, um, we've been able to establish a A P A, uh, psychological support for PTSD, um, American Legion, which now has its own quarters, and the fort has been all, uh, rehabilitated, and that's a really nice, um, fort for them and, uh, headquarters. And the membership, uh, of the American Legion has gone from half a dozen active members to where every meeting, there are forty to fifty people.
Any questions? Definitely, uh, wish they could engage with the county.
We'll, we'll definitely, uh, thank you, thank you so much. All right, let me talk to the next, uh, person here, uh, in the chamber, we have, uh, Bruce, picture me.
Good morning, both of you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, we recognize that it's probably gonna take a little bit of research.
Please, please, play the chair, please.
Bruce Bailey?
Bailey.
Bailey, yes.
Bailey.
Betraya Bailey.
Betraya Bailey.
Yes, so, uh, we know that this will probably take a little bit of research, without expecting an answer today, but, uh, it's a problem for us because we keep losing access to the quickest way down here to town. Normally, it takes us twenty minutes, now it takes us an hour, uh, because we have to go out and around, and, um, completely on the road to get here. So what happened was that, uh, we woke up one morning, and there was a fence across our road. Our neighbors had erected a fence, it's too close and hard wire across the fence, across the road. This has happened before, a couple of years ago, and then mysteriously, it was no problem anymore. But what we need to know is, is sixty-seven-three, County Road sixty-seven-three, is it a road, a county road, all the way up to this terminal, past Rio's, all the way up to the top? And we were told that it's not a county road.
But it's called County Road sixty-seven point three.
So we're just asking for some help on this, uh, know whether or not that that's an actual county road or not. We have not been able to find any records that the road was turned over to this group of people on, on that part of the road.
Because they erected a gate across, across the county road as well.
And so we're just asking for, uh, a read on this. So if we can come back, maybe, I suppose.
While we can engage with it on public comment, feel free to give me a call on my cellphone this evening. Okay, I, I, I have other folks that have contacted the guard, and I have, I can share that information with you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the individual that are hearing. I just want to comment, uh, be more than welcome to come back anytime, this board is open. We appreciate communication from everyone and anyone on any county we're near, so.
Call my cellphone.
At this point in time, let me ask for, on anyone that is online, uh, that wishes to address this board under public comment. All you would need to do is unmute yourself and/or raise your hand. Anyone online? Here and now, we're gonna go to the next section of this meeting. We are gonna go all the way to section nine, business, consideration of Perry Stokes Airport C O W C agreement. Back to you, Mr. Dorikamp.
Mission with three consideration is our Perry Stokes Airport C O D B A C agreement. The board awarded C O W C the, uh, safety design and oversight of the installation for Perry Stokes Airport, uh, safety system out there. As they're saying, it has means we cannot find any documents, health department doesn't have any documents, City of Trinidad has, doesn't have any documents, so what exactly we have out there currently? So because of the health department's regulations were required, not only at local level, but the state required a way to put in a new system, so that's what this is about. It's an agreement with C O W C, C O W C, to, uh, design and then provide oversight on the installation.
Uh, Mr. Dorikamp, I know, but first of all, I've done a look for my right, uh, legal counsel, I know there were some, uh, some recommended language that needed to be, uh, approved, and we, uh, commissioners, we have the latest document. Counsel, do you have any questions on the, the legal language here?
The language I requested be changed or added as the county document, and if there is one, I have further legal questions.
Thank you so much. Mr. Dorikamp, uh, as far as the total cost of the project that remains intact, correct?
Uh, yes, except, um, their R F Q, there was a heading error, and I, I think Commissioner Altotop, it was like two hundred and seventy dollars there. For whatever reason, when they added their numbers together, they didn't come up with the exact amount. Exact amount, you show me in this agreement of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, is still less than what the other, um, consultants who had submitted R F Qs, uh, their prices would be. So I ask the board to approve this agreement, so we can start up trying to get this, uh, safety system updated.
Very good. Commissioners, any additional questions for Mr. Dorikamp? Uh, thank you for, uh, Dr. Theologis, Counsel, and Mr. Dorikamp, and whoever else, uh, provided information on this, so at this point in time, if we don't have any additional questions, I'm gonna entertain a motion. Motion to approve the Perry Stokes Airport C O W C agreement. Second motion.
Mr. Hes?
Yes.
Mr. Reese, over.
Yes.
Mr. Pines, over.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, consideration of the color of the Department of Revenue, Division of Motor Vehicles, Office, lease. Back to you, Mr. Dorikamp.
Mr. Is this a need that they're admitting to the lease that we had with the Colorado Department of Revenue for their truckers license, uh, folks leasing the office space in the forehouse? Uh, I think the only changes from the second to the third are listed under Article A and B, page sixty-eight, as it is, uh, as the page numbers are, um, identified on the north right-hand side, uh, premises term section being submitted by change in end of the date at June thirty, twenty twenty-five, to June thirty, twenty twenty-eight, and in being ordered to walk premises term in, uh, section being submitted to the state of the rent table as follows, and lists what each one of the annual rental rates will be for that office space. So I ask the board to approve this.
If you, uh, Counsel, any questions with the language on this?
No questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Dorikamp? Motion. Do we not entertain a motion? Second motion.
Mr. Reese, over.
Yes.
Mr. Hes?
Yes.
Mr. Pines, over.
Yes. Uh, going to the next, uh, ninety, consideration of O B C C number seven zero two zero by Sanus County Treasurer to randomly deperstino and deperstino for one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. We have, uh, information attached, any questions on that? We'll not stand the procedure. Here are your questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve O B C C number seven zero two zero by Sanus County Treasurer to randomly deperstino and deperstino for one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Second motion.
Mr. Hes?
Yes.
Mr. Reese, over.
Yes.
Mr. Pines, over.
Yes. Ninety, consideration of O B C C number seven zero two one by Sanus County Treasurer to Mesa Mineral Inc. for a total of three hundred and forty-nine dollars five cents, and two hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety cents for a total of six hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Once again, same process. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the O B C C number seven zero two point one by Sanus County Treasurer to Mesa Mineral Inc. for a total of three hundred and forty-nine and two hundred and seventy-six cents for a total of six hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Second motion.
Mr. Reese, over.
Yes.
Mr. Hes?
Yes.
Mr. Pines, over.
Yes. And I believe this, uh, next one, ninety, consideration of Sanus County and the City of Trinidad inmate housing in a governmental agency agreement, uh, and we may have, uh, Sheriff Navarre in the event that we have any questions, uh.
Uh, yes, commissioners, I, I was approached a few months ago about looking at a contract with the city acting to house their municipal court sentencing. Uh, I had given them a, a contract similar to the one that we have in the Pueblo City, that we do hold their municipal sentences, so, uh, it was drafted by their attorney, and I have sent it to, uh, our county attorney, and I think it's ready for your review if she has any questions or concerns, I, if she can address those as well.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Sheriff. I actually, uh, I'm here before, at least I took a fellow commissioner's, any questions that may help you, Sheriff.
I don't have any questions, just a comment, uh, Sheriff Navarre, thank you for assisting the City of Trinidad in getting this going, I know this has been a hot topic, the city council meetings with their homeless issues, it was, uh, nice to have a presentation today by Detective Lay and Pastor, uh, Clay here today with us, um, but I think this is the first step in many steps of us alleviating, um, some of the issues that we have with our homeless folks here in town, and again, it's not illegal to be homeless, uh, but some of the activities that they engage in are, and hopefully this will assist them in getting the help they need, not just cleaning up our streets and towns, but sometimes you just need to, uh, have an opportunity to get yourself clean, whether you're an addict or, you know, a person of substance abuse, I think this should be a big step forward. Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask a naive question, Sheriff, is this the first time that we have these I G A's in Trinidad?
I kind of believe, uh, this is the first of, of this county, I know there's been some in the past, but they were like in the early seventies, uh, and different, uh, things that they addressed, but I, uh, we found the old one and then kind of revised that one, but I did send this newer version, and, but yeah, it's, it's been quite a while since they've had any involvement with the county and the city regarding inmate housing.
And currently, Sheriff, are many of these municipal detainees that you have in your facility, if any?
Uh, if we do house them, they're only held on city warrants or charges until their state charges are completed, and then, uh, we don't longer house them after that, they need to go to their municipal court or they get bonds, uh, out of our bail, but with this contract, we'd be able to house, if, if the city wants to sentence somebody out of the city for municipal violations, uh, that's what we would be housing for.
And, and by the way, thank you for, uh, negotiating the dollar amount as well, I mean, I know it's that you, you need to run your facility, and, uh, so I don't have any other questions, and I guess my, uh, the, the yes, not from Counsel. Uh, very good, thank you so much, and thank you, I could both be for doing this, this work. Commissioners, uh, any additional questions for Sheriff Navarre? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Los Angeles County and City of Trinidad In-Head Housing Service I G A. Second motion.
Mr. Hes?
Yes.
Mr. Reese, over.
Yes.
Mr. Pines, over.
Yes, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Ninety, consideration of Colorado Department of Human Services Behavioral Health Administration Contract Amendment Number Four. Uh, either back to Counsel or Mr. Dorikamp?
Permission for your consideration of contract amendment four with Colorado Department of Human Services, Behavior, Health, and Destruction.
Sheriff?
Yes, Commissioner, this is an additional, uh, grant funding from the, uh, Behavioral Health from the state, it's, uh, it's for our medicated assistance treatment program which we are legally mandated to have in our jails, it's an additional ten thousand to the original, uh, award that we received earlier this year, so it's just some additional funds coming our way to help with that program.
And so, uh, is this related to the J V B S grant that, uh, is also operational at the county facility?
Yes, this is, uh, just an additional funding to that original contract, and, uh, so we'll be getting around ten thousand more than we originally got awarded earlier this year.
Very good, and I know you probably have heard that the J V B S is perhaps some of the funding on those, uh, that have been allocated for those particular services, maybe we're going down even higher in some instances, very scarce to come by in future years.
Yes, uh, it's been, again, it's been.
even now in some instances, very scarce to come by in future years.
Yes, it's been, it's been decreasing every year since we originally received those grant awards. So we're still currently looking for some other grants and other options to maybe assist us with that program. But as of now, we have about a hundred and eighty-nine thousand to work with on that end of it. That's, with that's included with the ten thousand additional.
Also, on the C or southeastern Colorado region, nineteen, opioid dollars, I made a comment at the last meeting we had. And so Sheriff, let me follow up with you offline, and perhaps you can do a presentation to this group and begin to plan, write an R F P for a hundred dollars through the opioid dollars as well.
Okay.
I'll work with you. Commissioner, if any questions for Sheriff Navarre?
No, sir.
No. And Counsel said that no issues with very good. So no additional questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Move through the Colorado Department of Human Services, Behavioral Health Administration Contract Amendment Number Four.
Second motion. Commissioner Reese Littlep?
Yes.
Mr. Hens?
Yes.
Mr. Penis Littlep?
Yes. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Ninety, consideration of twenty-four dash C zero zero one, zero zero one, County Court Rule Number Two. Mr. Dorikamp?
Permission before you make consideration is change order number two for County Court Amendment. This came about with the desire that the judges may set additional outlets in the conduits and the wiring, everything else that goes along with those additional outlets, cap high cable, et cetera, et cetera, and also to repair, replace plaster to more view, plaster trim to north wall that was not picked up during the original scope for either one of these items were. And I believe we have, and I prefer the audience director, Kristi Copley, if I miss speaking here, but I believe we have funds available between the balance of what this contract, in addition to the two change orders, and while we was awarded under funded, we have a balance still available to pay for this.
Yeah, she confirms your statement, sir. Any questions for Mr. Dorikamp?
When's our title completion, Mr. Dorikamp, with this change order? Does that change at all?
No, Commissioner, I think Trinidad Destruction Group is going to have this, they're part of this project, and I guess within the next couple of weeks of this, what their last email stated, where they're going to run into some delays is the audio visual, A B, the audio visual installation, I think the state is going to be doing that. And then also, they're reupholstering the seats, and that's going to take a while, but as far as material destruction, it's going to, what they were, there's some work that should be completed, or it's middle of next month, if they is what I've been told.
Thank you. I have another question.
The grant expires December thirty-first, but that'll be done any minute.
And it may be within, for some reason, we.
Oh, an extension.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion on that item. Motion to approve twenty-four dash C zero zero one, County Court Rule Number Two. Second motion.
Mr. Hens?
Yes.
Mr. Reese Littleman?
Yes.
Mr. Penis Littlep?
Yes. Ninety-eight, consideration of two thousand twenty-five, the C H P Colorado Helpful Employer Options. Is this going back to Finance Director Cobrede?
Yes.
All right.
Good morning. So you can see, that's, we go to the page versus twenty twenty-five, employer options. So there's the medical. And like Tony Hasen said, I think it's a nine percent increase, since one of the plans is another two percent, that's eleven percent increase to employees. At the last page, you'll see where I added comparison from twenty-four to twenty-five, you can see that. But I was thinking, I wondered if we need to add the high deductible plans as well. Do you see this? So we have like a P P O plan, A, B five hundred, B thousand, B fifteen, and B two thousand. Should we add the alternate for high deductible as well, since it's increasing?
I think it probably would be, I don't know how many would take it, but definitely that would be an option that they should have access to.
Right. Because when I spoke to Biddy, it's just a few changes. I think there's no deduct, there's no Copley, but there's, we have the true deductible. There's just a few changes on that, but some employees might like the higher deductible since the cost is increased.
If it doesn't cost us anything, in my opinion, I would have that available for the decision of the staff to make that choice.
I did ask if it would cost, because you know how last year with the different tier? She said, no, there should be no cost, anything else, and we're changing, just adding another option for employee. And they'll have to look at the plan to see what they can add. So it's two thousand, twenty-five hundred and five thousand, higher deductible.
So if we're asking to add that supplement or change, do we need to reevaluate the document and present it again?
No, we just need to check mark, all the ones that we want. So that's why it's blind, so we can go through and check mark the plans that you want, and then we can put on the table. For dental, there was no change, no, no increase in dental. Vision, there was no change. We're still, because I think I'm saying, if you'd like to keep the one where it says, we give them the choice to pick whether they want medical or not with dental and vision. So we've always had the one where it says employer's choice. For life, no change on the cost. The other one is, we always had where the employer pays the life insurance, and it's three dollars and sixty cents per employee. That's that one. And then we just say signature, if that's why you want me to do it. If you want me to add the H D H Ps, I can just check mark all of those, tell them you like to add those options?
I think so. I mean, it's, it's available to benefit. We have perhaps some of the staff that are younger or that don't need to have, you know, I mean, I think it's part of the process. I would say yes.
Okay. All right. And then just, since dental, but no change, vision, but no change, leave the one where it says employer's choice, life, no change, and then employer still pays the life insurance, check mark that. Okay. And then I'll put on the table for a signature. Okay. Unless, because they want this, I think, by the twenty-nine, they'll send another meeting after that, so that's why we're just going to listen.
And so the county contribution, since the employee contribution is going to go up at ninety-one percent on the medical perspective, is the county also increasing the contribution?
That's something that I guess will probably be negotiated once we start budget.
Very good.
Yeah, that's something that I'll, I have to know, I usually go through when I do an analysis of everything with Commissioners.
Yes.
I will bring that forward.
Thank you.
When we get closer to actual budget.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
Any additional questions for Finance Director Cobrede? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve the twenty twenty-five C H P employer grant.
Second motion. Commissioner Reese Littlep?
Yes.
Mr. Hens?
Yes.
Mr. Penis Littlep?
Yes. Section ten, financial matters, consideration of payroll and bills, payroll for the first half of September two thousand twenty-four, back to Finance Director Cobrede.
Payroll as of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-four is two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine ninety-one and twenty cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? Invoices paid on September thirteenth, within this packet, let's see. The Art Valley, that's for the fairgrounds plan design, we paid them sixteen thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy cents. Roden Bridge purchased some gravel, four hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred. J V B S, since that, their grant increased, we've broken fourteen thousand two fifty-nine each month, so there's additional funding for that. And if I missed something, please tell me, I can keep explaining.
And by the way, thank you for working with the J V B S representatives and all that communication over the back and forth.
Yes.
Appreciate all that.
Yeah. I forgot to mention that the grant total for invoices were three hundred and forty thousand, eight oh six and thirteen cents. That's what was paid on September thirteenth.
Any questions for Finance Director?
Thirty-three cents.
Oh, yes. Here are no questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Make motion to approve the payroll and bills, payroll for the first half of September two thousand twenty-four.
Second motion. Mr. Hens?
Yes.
Mr. Reese Littlep?
Yes.
Mr. Penis Littlep?
Yes. Section eleven, executive session, the board will meet an executive session under C R S twenty-four six four two for bits confirmed with the county attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. A, permitted structures. B, junk. C, sanctuary county. D, contractual workers. At this time, Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion to take a recess from this meeting and enter into executive session with a small recess. So move.
Second. Mr. Reese Littlep?
Yes.
Mr. Hens?
Yes.
Mr. Penis Littlep?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.